Okay, hi everyone, welcome. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for January 3rd, 2024. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Thank you, and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, they're cute. The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment: we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. We'll start off with citizens' comments. Do we have anyone here for citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, I am going to begin with a special recognition that's not listed on our agenda. But I would like to take a moment to recognize that Lisa Carpenter, a longtime Auburn resident, died unexpectedly on Tuesday, December 26th. Lisa was the loving wife of Dale Carpenter and devoted mother of Amanda and Eric Carpenter, all of Auburn. And she had two, she had her, she was the adoring grandmother of Marley, Aria, Aiden, Carter, and Callie. Lisa was born in Worcester, raised and educated in West Boylston, and graduated from West Boylston High in 1980. Lisa has been a longtime employee at Auburn High School as a secretary, where she began in 2003, and she was promoted to data administrator several months ago. Lisa was a special person and meant a lot to her family. What I know of Lisa, on a personal note, as superintendent, that she was just a good, kind, and gentle person. She was great at her job, loved her job, told me that just recently. She was a great colleague, and she's going to be very well missed by everyone in the Auburn Public Schools. So if we could have a moment of silence for Lisa. Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to the special recognitions in the agenda this evening, we'd like to recognize Auburn High School student Logan Plum, who auditioned for the New England Music Festival in Griswold, Connecticut on December 9th. We're thrilled to announce he was accepted and will be joining top students from New Hampshire, Vermont, Connecticut, and Massachusetts in a concert festival in March. It's an incredible achievement, and we want to congratulate Logan and all the students selected for this opportunity. We'd also like to congratulate Zunai Molten, who broke an Auburn High School indoor track and field record on Wednesday, December 13th. Zunai broke the 55-meter dash record with a hand time of 7.3 seconds, which converts to a 7.54 in electronic time. Mile Split, Massachusetts declared Zunai one of its Elite Performers of the Week. Zunai now holds two indoor track and field records. She set the 300-meter record as a freshman during her first-ever indoor and track season with a time of 44.33 seconds. That was on January 15th of 2023. So a varied kind of special recognition this evening, but all important in life in general.
Yes, yep. Congrats to those students, that's pretty impressive. So, all right, I'll seek approval for the minutes from December 13th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 13th, 2023.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, student reps tonight?
No, they're not yet tonight.
Nope, okay. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as we do, we are going to begin with our student spotlight. And this evening, we have Mrs. Trini here with some of her students from Bryn Mawr Elementary School to talk to us about New Year's around the world. Thank you.
Yes.
Are you sharing, Susan?
I'm going to, I just gotta get there a second.
All right, good evening. Thank you, I have the pleasure of introducing some amazing second graders and a second grade teacher, Mrs. Adine Trini. Here with us today, I have Jordan Feen, Noah Rodriguez, Harrison Eisner, Sidney Meadows, and Zoe Jane Richard. They are, I'm gonna turn it over to them now.
Thank you much, thank you very much for having us this evening. Our students are going to tell you about their trip around the world.
This year in second grade, we took the four different countries around the world before landing back in America. To learn about different New Year traditions, we packed our suitcases and took our passports with us.
Happy Hogmanay.
Did you know, in Scotland, New Year's Eve is called Hogmanay? During Hogmanay, they have many festivals. One is a fire festival. Men throw fireballs into the air as they walk down to the Harrowboat. When they get to the Harrowboat Harbor, they throw the fireballs into the water for good luck. They also have fireworks and sing all odd lang singing at midnight. After midnight, if you go to someone's house, you should bring a gift, which is called a first footer gift. That this means if you are the first person to step foot into someone's house, you have to bring a gift to the family for good luck of the good New Year. We made first footer gifts, which was a national flower for Scotland, a thistle.
Lovely, nice.
In Mexico, families celebrate the New Year with music, food, and many special traditions. They wear special colors, red, yellow, white, and green, for special hopes in the New Year. Many even wear red underwear for good luck. Coins are baked in bread called pan de chere for good luck and fortune. Many people carry a suitcase around the block at midnight if they are hoping for an adventure in the coming year. Before the clock strikes midnight, people eat 12 grapes to bring good luck for each month in the New Year.
Oh, cute. Very nice.
And I could tell you that some of my, the kids in my class actually put the red underwear on. They wore it when they came back.
In Australia, New Year's is during the summer. Families and friends gather together to celebrate with picnics, barbecues, festivals, and beach trips. Australia's New Year's Eve celebration also includes a beautiful firework display starting at midnight. The Sydney Harbour Bridge fireworks are the most famous and can be seen on TV to welcome the arrival of the New Year.
In China, Gan Hui Fat Chui is the greeting of the Chinese New Year. This celebration is the most important celebration of the year. For the Chinese, these celebrations began as a way to mark the end of the long winter and the beginning of spring. It is celebrated with big parades, fireworks, and special foods. Since, since the dragon is a symbol of wealth and long life, many people dress up as dragons and dance in the parades. We made dragons' heads that had fire coming from his mouth as we, as well as the dragon puppet.
Very nice.
Finally, we landed back home and learned about the different traditions people do in the night like watching the ball drop, football, or Rose Bowl parade. Did you know that some people believe if you eat a black eye piece, it will bring you good luck? We shared what our families do too. Then we wrote a New Year's resolution to be positive in the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you to our friends, very proud of them. This was something that was new for Bryn Mawr this year. Second grade wanted to kind of create a new tradition of kind of celebrating New Year's around the world. We also had like a coloring book for, because there were so many countries that we just, we couldn't do them all. So every day they came in and they had a coloring book, and it had like a fact from a different country. We had Ghana, Nigeria, Haiti, Venezuela, and Brazil. So every day they came in and learned a different fact about other countries as well.
That's great. Do you guys have a favorite country? Out of all, yeah. China was your favorite? Oh, Australia.
Australia.
Australia. What was yours?
Mexico.
Mexico?
Mexico.
Fantastic.
Awesome, great job, guys, wow.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming. Could we have the kids come up and shake our hands as they kind of then head on their way? So we can thank them for coming?
Thanks, my friends. And if you come up and go, wait, stay on the line.
Great job.
Really well done, thanks for sharing.
Great job.
Great job, nice reading up there, too. Nice reading, excellent.
That's John.
Thank you so much. Thank you, excellent reading up there, nicely done. Fantastic job. Families, thanks for coming tonight. Thank you, everyone. Awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, awesome job.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Nice job.
Thank you for coming. I was like, thank you for coming. They were so excited.
Mr. Hugo, are these, Mr. Hugo, Chris, are these really loud tonight?
No, I feel like they're little.
Okay.
Yeah, they sound a little.
They're a little loud. Yeah.
Don't get too close.
Don't get too close.
Yeah, right. Well, that was wonderful. Yeah, thank you for bringing that to us. All right, we will now move on to unfinished business.
Thank you. And so we move back again to the FY25 budget. Again, the budget presented to you over the last several meetings represents a 5.63% increase from the amended FY24 school budget of $30,132,276 to the FY25 draft budget of $31,828,336, for an overall increase of $1,696,060. And so this evening, we are at the point that we have had this on the agenda several times for questions and discussion, and we are required by the process for the town to move this forward with a vote if the board so chooses, so.
Okay, any discussion before we go to vote?
No. All right.
I'll vote to approve and send forward the FY25 budget as presented by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you to the town for their ongoing support.
Agreed. And we will see, as it, as it states, it remains as a draft with many other moving pieces to inform where we'll finally land come May. But time will tell, so time will tell.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, step one. So, all right, thank you, guys. Go ahead. The next item is the field trip policy draft. So as you know, we had looked at several of our field trip policies. We found another one that we were going to, we compiled. I worked to compile this in with a lot more information on it. This is our second reading. I didn't know if anyone had any questions or thoughts at this time.
Any questions or discussion? Hopefully, had a chance to read through it.
We will bring it back one more time for third reading and a vote if you so choose.
Through the chair, I just had, I just had one, and it was just about the repeat, like annual field trips that are very consistent every year. Should there be something in there where they don't need to give us the six months or the three months? You know what I mean, like bringing, for instance, like the ski trip? Do we need to vote on that in June when they're not going? You know what I mean? I didn't know. Only on ones that we've been there, we know the routine, we know how many kids, we know who the player, you know what I mean? For those type of things, did they have to go so formal through the whole process? That was the only question that I was like, well. I mean, I know if they were going to D C that 100%, you know, things, there's too many moving pieces, you know, in the world, you know what I mean? But where they always go to Hanover for the Christmas show, or they always go to this consistently every year? They know how many buses, they know how many people.
So I don't think like the trips to the Hanover are that far in advance. The ones that are further in advance, does the Hanover six months?
Well, no, it was just, we were changing the times of when they had to tell us.
Yep.
And I thought for items that were kind of an annual thing, could there be kind of like a blurb where they just have to get the documents to us in a timely manner, but not the three months or?
Let's see if we can find where the, that is in here. So I think it's on, like page three, I guess it would be, Part C, authority to approve.
Out-of-state day trips, looks like. Yeah, international say one year.
International is one year. All school-sponsored out-of-state day trips, it does say six months in advance. And I think we could clarify, so things like the trips to the Hanover, I don't think need to come before the board, and so.
But like the ski trip, they were going to, was it Vermont, right?
No, they go up to Quebec.
Yeah, but that's out-of-state or out-of-country.
No, 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 the, the ski trip they did to Sugarloaf, was it? The one that he had to bring to us, it was over this, I was here like two days, and I was like, yes, I agree, I approve, yes, I want the kids to go. But I thought that was kind of like a little bit on the excessive side when they knew it's 80 kids, it's this much money, it's this many buses.
Yeah. I think past practice, anything out-of-state comes before us.
But what I'm saying is the timing for something that's an annual, do they have to bring it the?
Well, through the chair, they might need to fundraise, that's why.
Fundraisers.
That's the bigger issue, the fundraising piece. Yeah, so if it's 80 bucks, we, you know, you have to.
Yeah, so that it's approved, so then they can fundraise.
Yeah.
And I think these days, the variations that we see sometimes in transportation costs could warrant something like, you know, a bigger effort around fundraising because of that, because we have seen wide swings in what things cost related to just transportation, whether it be vehicles or the actual fuel that's associated with the trip, so.
Okay. That was just, there was just one little thing that I was like, oh, but we know about it, we know it's coming.
Yeah.
You know, okay.
Okay. Through the chair, I just, under Part A, number two, I really like the wording here, participation is optional voluntary, not eligible for financial assistance. Do we feel that we need to put something under like academic fieldwork trips that, you know, this is eligible for financial assistance? Like, do we need to clarify that or no?
Well, I think though the academic fieldwork trips, the participation is expected. And so, do we need to put, is and is eligible for financial assistance there?
Well, we can.
Because I'm concerned that like if it's expected and a parent can't afford it, you know.
Yeah, I think we always have in the past anyway, it goes just unspoken, I guess.
We have, what we have is the Helping Our Own Fund. Cecilia, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, if, if there is students that can't afford it and the parent makes staff like guidance or the principal aware, then usually they fill out a form and they come forward, and we usually try to.
Yeah, it's for really kind of any.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, like, if we put financial assistance is, like, is eligible for financial assistance, at least a parent can see that and know, okay, well, if they have to go on a geology class field trip, like, and they need 50 bucks to do it, like, I know I can ask for help. So, you know, so just to be clear, you know, just so they know. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think it's very thorough now, that we at least now have a thorough document to look through.
The only thing to that, on page three, there is number 11, which does get to that point that you're raising.
Yeah.
Probably through the chair on the permission slips and stuff anyway.
Yeah.
If it is the number, right, twice. And I just, I don't know about you, but I don't know a lot of parents who are gonna read through this with a fine-tooth comb over the permission slip where it would probably already say.
Or you could just take out 11 and put it with that one. You could just take out 11 and put it with, with one, because it's saying the same thing. Doesn't matter to me, it says in two quarters.
I don't know, I think we should just leave it as is, honestly.
I think that also ties to number 12, where it addresses the cost for optional, so it's, it's, this, this beginning part is really a set of definitions.
Yeah.
And then it hits the other.
Okay, you're right.
Right? So maybe we leave as is, since that's addressed further on.
All right, so we'll bring that back one more time for third reading.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is the memorandum of understanding to be signed with the Auburn Police Department for the use of body-worn cameras by our school resource officers. As you know, Acting Chief Mills was here for our last meeting to discuss what that would look like, noting that they would only be used in very extraordinary circumstances, where the safety of staff or students were in jeopardy. And so I ask for your permission to sign that memorandum with the chief of police. And we'll take any questions if you have any.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum between the Auburn Public Schools and the Auburn Police Department as presented by the superintendent.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion or questions? I think it was great that he came and spoke to us too beforehand, so.
They've been really very communicative, they've been great.
Very transparent about everything, so. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's a vote. Get that in the books, so they can start using them tomorrow then.
Yeah, we'll get this, we'll have to get it signed.
Oh, yes, of course.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'll be in touch with him tomorrow.
All right, cool.
Yeah, he gave us the day because they wanted to start it for the New Year, and our meeting was today.
Yeah, yeah.
So. All right.
Yep.
All right, we will move on to new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item in your packet is a historical field trip listing. This was something that had come up in the course of our conversations related to the field trip policy. So just to explain how this works, the first document is for 2018, 2019. All of those, the little color key is on the back of the second page, but all of those in blue were take, were field trips by Auburn High School. Those in the green were Auburn Middle School. The yellowish is Swiss, purple is Bryn Mawr, and the orange is Packerchog. So you'll see for that year, those are all the trips that they took. And then the next page is 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, and so forth. So I don't know if you have any questions about this, but I think there was a request at a previous meeting to be able to see what are the kinds of trips that we've taken. We hope this is fairly comprehensive. But as you might imagine, even at the high school with the transition of Mandy coming over here, right, there could be a couple of things that maybe were missed, but we think this is a fairly comprehensive look at the trips that our students have taken over the course of the last few years.
Yeah, so I had requested this, and thank you very much for collecting all the data. I think I was looking for some kind of spike in this, you know, the kids leaving the state of Massachusetts to go on field trips, and it's not so. So this was good, like, it shows, we really do utilize our state and the surrounding areas, we keep it close. And I guess I would just encourage the future trips to stay the same, you know, just stay local and shop local and all that, so. But I do appreciate this. This was, it just felt like it was needed so we could see where we're all going, and a lot of good repeat trips are in here, and.
Through the chair, I still remember going to Lowell when I, I think I was in Flitree. I was studying. Drive by, I'm like, I went there.
Lowell's a fun field trip. So is the Patriot Place for the eighth graders. Yeah, they love it. It's a really cool STEM trip. Yeah. Yeah, our teachers do a great job finding, you know, local areas and trips that have to, that tie into the curriculum, so. All right, and we don't need any, or anything like that, so.
Share of information.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mandy, for doing that. 2021, 2020 and 2021 looks like a very sad year for. Yeah, I noticed that. Like, it's kind of depressing. You can see where COVID hit. Swiss was the only place that went anywhere. Yeah. It's kind of a depressing year.
I don't even know if those papers were filed when they actually went, but.
I know.
To look at that.
I don't remember anyone going anywhere.
It could have just been that the trips were put in.
We canceled them all, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, the next item in your packet is a NESDEC 2023-2024 Enrollment Projection Report. This is something that we tend to do annually. We are a member of NESDEC, so we send them data, and then they kind of compile it and use their best intuitive judgment on where we may be headed with enrollment. Many school districts across the state use this, particularly when they're looking at the potential building projects or the like. So just to point out a few of the highlights, if you go just to page one, which on the top it says enrollment, some of the, there are page numbers in the middle bottom, bottom of each page. So it gives you some overall information about how this all works. So in the third paragraph, you know, it does talk about enrollment projections are more reliable in years one through four in the future, and less reliable in the out-years. And as it moves out, right, you can use some of that for planning purposes, but it does become less reliable, right? They don't have a crystal ball, they're doing the best kind of forecasting that they can. The next paragraph does show that enrollment, the enrollment projection that they did previously fell within 36 students of the K to 12 total of 2436 projected versus the 2,400 enrolled. One variance of 33 students occurred at kindergarten with 179 projected, 146 enrolled. So some of that has to do with birth rates and with move-ins and move-outs and property availability, right, for people to buy homes or to rent homes. And then if you look at the final paragraph, it does talk about over the next three years, K to 2 enrollments are projected to increase by 17 students. Grades three to five are projected to decrease by about 31 students. Grades six through eight enrollments are expected to decrease by 12 students, and nine through 12 enrollments expected to increase by 10. and nine through 12 enrollments expected to increase by 10. And that's primarily as, you know, as they move through the grades. On the next page, page two, the historical percentage changes, which is that bottom right-hand box, we're showing from the 2013-14 school year to 2023-24, the overall change has been an increase of about 4.6%. And again, many of these historical numbers you see each October when we bring you forward the enrollment and we, we give you some historical data on the overall totals there. The next is just a graph of the same information. Page four is now when they talk about some of the projected enrollment going through the 2033-34 school year. And from 2023 and on, they're looking at potentially a 3.1% decrease in enrollment. And again, in that larger grid at the top, anything in that blue color, that's a, those numbers are based on estimated births. So that's why they talk about it not being as reliable, because you can estimate, but whether or not that happens, you're not sure. Those in the gray are based on children that are already born, that they're aware of, living here, that, that will be coming to us, and then the rest in the white are based on students that are already enrolled with us. And they just kind of move that forward for each year.
Through the chair, the new developments are included in this?
Well, I'm gonna, there's something about that in a subsequent page, yes. So, so I think some of that is included here.
Great.
So if you look at, the next is just again a graph of the projected enrollment. Page six is historical and projected enrollments, just kind of in a line graph over those course of the year. So you'll see it went up that 2017-18, 18-19 year, we were high with it continuing to decrease a little bit. But if you go on to, in each of these next graphs, on page seven is a line graph by grade band, again, just around enrollments. Grade eight is just a different kind of bar graph related to enrollments. And grade nine compared, I mean, page nine compares births to kindergarten enrollment. But if you go to page 10, which is additional information, this is where they note building permits, permits that have been issued. So they get this information through housing, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So you'll see in 2023, there have been 114 permits for multi-units. So I think that's what's reflective of what's, excuse me, of the building that may be happening up the street, that I believe will be happening. So I do think that some of that was factored into those, those numbers. The one thing I will point out that I do not believe is correct is if, on that same page, if you look in the second to the last column at the bottom, K to 12 out of district special ed, for 23-24, they have 28. That number is not correct. Because we're down to 12. But it could be when this, when they gathered this data, it could have been higher, but I still know it wasn't 28.
No.
So that sticks out as a kind of a sore thumb. But other than that, like our, our school choice in number 77 is correct, so. And then on the next page, page 11, you're going to see New England's pre-K, pre-K to 12 enrollment trends, which you'll see across the New England states, there's a decline in enrollment. With Massachusetts, they're showing overall a 4.5% decrease. New Hampshire having almost 15% decrease in enrollment. And again, this is seeing a decline in the number of births, which I heard on the news yesterday, is associated, when economies do well, births tend to go down. So again, these are, these are all projections, which are based on the best information they have. But this is something that I thought would be important for you to have at the next meeting. We will be voting first as to whether or not to continue our school choice programming. And then later in the year, we vote with how many slots. We will, if we choose to continue it, then we will vote later in the year on the number of slots. But some of this may be informative as we look at those numbers. So I don't know if anybody had any questions or?
Any questions? No? I mean, even a presidential election can change all of this, you know, so who knows?
There's a lot of variability in it.
Definitely a good starting point.
You know, I think housing availability in Auburn has played a role in that as well, you know? It's been really difficult for folks, so.
And I am happy to see on that page that you pointed out, Beth, was that, like, they, they seem to be taking into account that, that building.
Yes.
So that's good to know.
Yep. It does look like it's almost done, too. It's moving right along.
Oh.
Up on there, on the hill. Yeah. Yeah. So, all right, well, everyone, take a moment to look at that before the next meeting if you can.
Okay, the next two items on the agenda are really perfunctory that we are required to share with you. The Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Annual Report and that of the Assabett Valley Collaborative Audit Report, noting that this has been, the SWAC was approved by the SWAC Board of Directors on the, at the December 15 meeting. And the Assabett Valley Audit Report was approved at the December 1st, 2023 meeting, so. If you have any questions and read through that, I will tell you that both, both collaboratives are being run exceptionally well. Southern Wester County is growing tremendously under Arnold Lundwall. He's really done a nice job as its director and was fortunate to be a part of two organizations that are really helpful, informative, and provide us with some terrific services. Assabett Valley, we use a lot for their transportation services for students who are out of district. So they coordinate that. Right now, those transportation contracts are out for bid. Previously, they were primarily serviced through Vanpool. Many of the districts that were supported through them last year, or this year, I should say, really struggled with them having enough drivers and the service. We were not hit with that difficulty. So Assabett Valley's big focus right now is trying to work through a new transportation contract, but that really serves us well to save money for the students that we send out and how we get them to those placements.
That's great. Good. Yeah, last year I went through them with a fine tooth comb, and this holiday season I did not. I will save that for some other time. Look through it. But no, we do thank them for all of, yeah, their support.
Yeah, it's a good collaboration.
It is. All right.
All right, that's me, right?
That is.
Oh geez, sorry. All right, teaching and learning report.
I've got a slide deck. So yesterday, as you well know, we had a professional development day. And at the last school committee meeting, I talked about, a little bit about what, everything that was happening. And so I just wanted to take a couple of minutes just to show you some highlights. You'll see some of these pictures. I took some of these pictures. I asked for people to share with me and some places I forgot to get some pictures. So there's some schools that I didn't get. But, you know, the big, the big item on yesterday's agenda for classroom teachers was UDL. So we've been doing universal design for learning for three years now. This is our third year. And so teachers were engaged at each building. Packerchog and Bryn Mawr come together and work together. And so, but all the other buildings had their own presenter and working through developing lessons. And there's a, there's a nice connection of learning skills and then applying it and working together collaboratively. And you can see that taking place in some, in some of these places. We have had, you know, I do ask for feedback after each time we get together. And so in some cases, we've received feedback that the presenter wasn't quite a match for the level. And so in some places, we asked for change of presenters and we got some really positive feedback. And people talked yesterday in the survey that I sent out about the instructor that they had modeling inclusive practices, being very engaging and giving people collaborative time. So in most cases, we've had the same presenter, but in some, we've had to, we've changed over the years. We also, yesterday, had some departmental activities going on. So art and music got together, art got together with art and music got together with music, and they did some vertical work together, trying to align themselves vertically in the K through 12 or 3 through 12 area. Nurses were working on receiving some advanced skills training in our health documentation software, which is SNAP. The counselors, they were working with Sue Bannon from the Worcester County DA's office, and she was working on trauma, she was working with him on trauma-informed practices. And we received some really positive feedback from the counselors where they were sharing that, you know, one of the, a couple of the comments were seeing how trauma plays out and understanding the why behind some kids' actions. And ultimately, her presentation was about a national program called Handle With Care, really trying to build in interventions to help students who have experienced trauma be their best self. And then the wellness department spent some time unpacking the new health and PE standards, which of course, we've talked about here with this group. So overall, it was really positive feedback from teachers. I'm still collecting that, but it has been positive. They talked about it being informative and productive, helpful to tackle these things as a K to 12 group. And so I just wanted to share some words and some pictures with you.
Like a fun day. All right, great. Is that all you have, Mr.?
That's everything I got, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
I feel like that the New Year's around the world was like perfectly designed for UDL. Because I bet you they had like a video, a reading, like an activity that would have been like amazing. And that's, I think we got so many different ideas of like what the kids liked.
Right.
Because that was like, I bet you that's how they did it, which would have been really interesting to see.
You know, you can steal that and use it in your own classroom.
I can, yeah.
All right, great.
Although those kids pronounce those words amazingly, so.
Oh, they were so cute.
Old Lanzine, I was like, yes, you do it. And I was like, I can't even pronounce that.
They really did. They did great.
Yeah.
It was actually very impressive.
And that's hard. And getting up in front and being, knowing you're like on TV. It's like, that was pretty impressive.
I think they told them they were on TV.
No, one of the kids said they did.
Oh, they did? Oh, okay.
They were very excited.
Yes, they were very excited.
They were, they were super.
All right, we'll move on to business and financial.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet have provided a year-to-date budget report dated December 20th for your review. And along with that, I have a listing of budget transfers dated December 20th in the same series for your information and between different series for which I'm seeking your approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Cecilia? Nope, seeing none. Seek a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated December 20th, 2023, as presented by the business manager.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a vote. Thank you. Thank you for your report. I know, that was. That sounds exhilarating. Do we need executive session tonight?
We do not.
We do not, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.